We have a four. Item three are items for review and discussion. Item three A are appearances. Item three A one is to request to park a concession trailer behind the House and Lodge number thirty-five building. Mr. Howson, are you here please?
Thank you Mayor.
Yes sir.
Council. My name is Sheriff Councilman.
Can you give us your name and address please?
Yes. Mary Howson, fifteen oh nine Winter Road here in Perry.
Okay, thank you sir.
I'm a member of House and Lodge ten seventeen, Jurnigan Street. We've been in this community for a hundred seventy-five years. I'm looking pretty good for that. The reason we're here this evening is basically to ask permission to park our trailer behind our lodge building. We own fifty feet behind that building, which includes the apron, all the way up to just a little past the telephone, the power hall in that parking lot. There are some other properties in town that do have trailers parked there. I provided most of you pictures of those trailers. They've been there for quite a while. So we're just requesting that we have permission to park our trailer on our property. It would not block any access or parking in that parking lot. And also this first picture you see of the second one, I have a little outline of probably where our, approximately where our trailer would be parked. There's a little loading dock there.
This picture and this picture the same.
Yes, that's the same.
Yes.
You'll see the backside and the front side. I am aware now, I wasn't aware earlier, that there is an ordinance. I've checked all through the parking ordinances in the city of Perry and I did not see the one for the temporary uses instructors. So I did not see that the parking for trailers was under that section. So I apologize for that. But whether we need a waiver from that ordinance or a bar, get a barrier at some time, I'd like you to give us permission to park our trailer back on our property.
Mr. Gilmore, does this have to be added to our agenda tomorrow night for any action that's taken on?
Yes. Either tomorrow night or very quickly after that.
Okay.
So we're actually not sure, but it requires something in regular meeting for you all to go on.
So what's the administration's position on this or do you guys have one at this moment?
Administration does not have a position at this time. One thing we need to go back and check and see on is what some of the history is for some of the other trailers that are shown there. You know, for example, the work trailers for Monster BBQ, which is one of the ones that you have shown there, that came in as an okay relative to that specific operation that they run there. So for example, Monster BBQ, some of you all can remember this, we told them it could not park its, for lack of a better term, food truck display type vendor like the lodge has right here, we told them they could not park it in the downtown. But I noticed that there are some other samples which are shown here and that's what we need to go back and check and see. For example, the last one in the package you all provided, thank you for the packet by the way, shows for New Hope Baptist Church. New Hope Baptist Church, I don't believe is in the district now, so, but we do need to check out some of the other ones so we would get something to you, for you to consider.
We will take that under advisement and it would be on one of our regular council meetings with as immediate as we can check it out.
Okay, great, thank you for any questions, Council.
Where is the park now?
Excuse me?
Where is the trailer park now?
It's at a neighbor's house and it's becoming a problem. It's better have this place that she doesn't really like in the yard.
I was wondering, has the lodge looked into potential places to park and storage facilities where sometimes these types of vehicles are parked like a boat and other things like that?
We are a nonprofit organization.
Right.
The food truck, every dollar that we make in proceeds from that food truck goes to local charities.
Right. But I know you have operational expenses.
Yes.
That certainly, could certainly prove to be one of the. What about the neighbors in that parking lot square? Have you discussed it with them?
No, because this is our property.
Right.
And we aren't, you know, we want to be good neighbors, that's why. Hey boss. This is Brandon Miller, the head of our organization at the lodge. We haven't talked to the neighbors about it because this is our property and we wanted to park it on our property, but we also want to continue to be good neighbors. And as far as I know, there would be no problem.
But we haven't spoken.
No, we haven't spoken to anyone.
Other questions, Council? Mr. Howson is here. Is he? The other gentleman?
Brandon Miller?
Brandon Miller.
Brandon Miller, could you give us your address please?
My address?
My home address?
Yes, so we have it for the record.
Yeah, sure. It's eight one zero, John E. Sullivan Road, Byron Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yes sir.
No other questions? We'll be back in touch with you and let you know when it will be on the regular council agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you bringing us forward. Item three A two is the green end redevelopment options. Mr. Patel?
Sir?
Yes sir. If you'll come and please give us your name and address and let us know what you would like us to discuss.
Respect your council members, my name is Mark, Mark Apuanah, address for the record is four hundred Galloway Parkway, suite one one four zero, Atlanta, Georgia. We are here to seek council's opinion on the option of the redevelopment of the properties located at one thousand four St. Patrick's Drive and two hundred Valley Drive. So we recently, in the, we recently went through a full application of resuming the planning commission and everything and maybe our approach was incorrect. So we would advise that we should bring your options to council and seek out your opinion. You know, so I would like to present, we only have two options for the properties as a developer, what we see. I would like to just take a couple of minutes and explain both options. So for the first option A, what we originally want to do, we want to develop both properties. These are old hotels that's been staying there for many years. They are concrete, solid structure, very hard to demolish, very expensive stuff. We would like to convert them into modern law, rent-only apartments with fully furnished and full amenities. So these would not be sellable units, you cannot sell them individually, these would be rent-only. And there are lots of benefits of having those at particular locations, especially for city as well as for us. So the two hundred and two room, two head, Valley Drive property, we would like to do hundred and sixty-two rentable units. The restaurant and bar would be renovated as restaurant and bar and the recreational place, spaces for tennis. There will also be outdoor recreational areas. The St. Patrick's Drive building, since it's so close to Walmart and all the nice living room places, we would like to propose a grand new one-story retail shopping center. And the three building that is on the back side, out of those hundred and twenty-six rooms, we would convert them into hundred and eight modern law's rent-only apartments. So, billboard, what will happen to the billboard? We will remove all three or four pylon signs, we just need one pylon sign for the shopping center and we will give us one monument sign for the apartment. Billboard, if we are allowed to keep, as long as we are owner and the next owner for twenty-four months, we can rent into city of Perry for one dollar one month, or we can remove the billboard like our previous proposal. What are we asking for? Currently, both properties combined, we have over three hundred, close to three hundred and forty rooms. And we are already zoned for about two hundred and twenty-one or some part of twenty acre per, you know, twenty dwellings per acre. We would like to increase it just around fifteen to twenty percent and relieve to two hundred and sixty-two. Uh, two hundred and seventy, hundred and sixty-two on the Valley Drive and one hundred and eighty. So density values is the only thing we're seeking. We need the frontage, setbacks, current zoning, we need everything else. We're not asking for any other financial assistance or tax benefits or anything like that. So, if you see the two properties in the blue color, maybe just bring it better, the two properties in the blue color is the property, the top right property is the one right next to the Walmart and the bottom left property is the, in front of that trailer park. That's just for the location. This is the Valley Drive property, as you can see, we have close to three hundred and twenty parking spaces. We would add chaise, swimming pool would be renovated, you know, to have outdoor recreational areas. Out of two hundred and twelve rooms, we'll end up having hundred and sixty-two dwellings. Then of course, add sprinklers, file alarm, latest wifi system and everything to make it appealing to corporate America-type dwellings. This is the same Patrick Drive property, as you can see, everything that is in yellow is the retail. So that orange section is where we would like to put that shopping center. So as you can see, going back close to seventy-five, the continuous development of retail can stay. And the three building in the back would stay as multi-family, rent-only dwellings. They would not be selling houses or sellable units, they would be rent-only apartments. That would make to the public eye visually accessible to road, the retail will stay retail and those three buildings in the back would stay as multi-family. This is just to show that we don't need, when we design, we would have outdoor parking and we would have all five turn around, emergency vehicle building approach and everything, we can need all that. This is just to survey, we have rent in the back, we can add ample parking as needed for the shopping center as well as for the apartment. This is just to show that we would, we have a shopping center in the front where the orange is and the blue where the apartments will go, we will need about two hundred and eight parking spots and the capacity of the property currently is up to two hundred and fifty-six parking spots. So all the details aside, this is what your dwelling would look like. This is one example of the studio dwelling. This is the other example of the one bedroom, one living room, kitchen, rent-only dwelling. This is what the conceptual design of our shopping center would look like up front. So I know this is just a conceptual design and it is possible that council might consider that somebody might promise nice things and not do the nice things. So that road, we would comment, we would comment to the structures that make it nice. We wouldn't make a monotonous brick building or a stucco building that is all uniform and boring like nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties. We would give it different storefronts, glass, stucco, hardy plank. We wouldn't have uniformed ceiling, which is cheap. We would have, maybe the corners would be sixteen feet, then there would be lower fourteen feet and the middle two would be under twenty feet higher. The elements that make it upscale and modern for the retail shopping center, we would comment to have those elements in right in our plan. For the apartment units in the back, rentable units, we would have stainless steel appliances, quad stove or branded stone tops. We would have cabinets, actual plywood cabinets, non-postparticular board that just, you know, goes bad in five years, we'd have fifteen inch TVs, brand new mattresses, so this would be fully furnished apartments. So what are the main benefits and why are we doing this? Why would somebody want to stay behind cornering, as some would not think? Or why might somebody want to stay so close to the Walmart? See, this is a mixed-use benefit. I have lived in Ohio, Chicago and Atlanta and currently where we're developing, we have seen that for any city where there is a lot of retail congestion, a malformation of retail as well as mixed use, that means some rentable unit brings benefit, complimentary benefits to both. It takes away from the traffic on the road because currently, I'm hearing what they're requiring hundred and seventy car a week summer, somebody staying in their apartments, they would not, all of them would not have cars because they would like to stay there like that. Additional benefit is, these are corporate America, everywhere we see, just like we did our feasibility study putting this in project area in city of Perry, if Amazon Fulfillment Center is doing their study, if CarMax is doing their study, FedEx is doing their study, they would realize that, okay, Perry is far from Macon and far from Jackson, but it's a good location for next five years, Perry should have, you know, a good distribution center. That's a lot of jobs and a lot of investment, you know, a lot of good things for city. But when these people come in, Amazon, FedEx, CarMax, so many big employer, Fortune five and Fortune one thousand companies, they would like to see that, oh my God, my construction's going to be twelve, thirteen months and my training of employees and assembly line's going to be fifteen months, six months. During the two to three years, can I spend that much money staying in my home of my good people in hotels and hotels? So our studio apartments kind of fit perfectly in corporate America lifestyle because they are fully furnished. They already have swimming pool, chaise, everything's renovated, brand new lock system, brand new fast hundred and eighty's wifi, wifi line. So these are very attractive to have as well. Even for city, when somebody comes and approaches the economic development department or planning commission to the council itself, so very, very good point for city to have and say, hey, we have hotels, we have upscale hotels, we have hotels and we have the modern law apartments where the lease is six months minimum. So you know, we don't rent this like apart, we don't rent this like hotels. That is one of the things. The other big, other benefits city can have, giving us a little bit more density so we can afford the shopping center and have this is, it goes hand in hand with Houston County Joint Comprehensive Plan. It's not a very big point, city's very, it's its own city, you know, it can show that, hey, you know, comprehensive plan came out in February, that you should have variety of, you know, housing and ability for people to stay and then we approve it right away saying, you know, we have something where people can stay. Another benefit our study brought out was Robbins, everybody's is so close, veterans make really good people that help out cities. Your veterans staying in apartments or their spouses who rent like that, even ten or twenty percent of these units because it's usually just husband and wife. They can stay there, they need really good contractors, hopefully what city of Perry has, let's say, some life problems, so if somebody wants to renovate their house, having more young people in town is always helpful like that. And the way city of Perry is developing very nicely, you have larger houses, you can probably show that, you know, we're trying to bring educated young high-income earners in our city, but let's say first year or second year, they do not have enough money to put down payment from the big houses because houses are always not for twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square. But these are good stepping stone for one year, six months, eighteen months to rent. They can get a feel of the city, they like everything, they're like, okay, I like the house, my house was under construction and now house is done, I think six over six month I can move. This is all we can do and all we need is about twenty, twenty-five percent density values. We need everything else, parking, frontage. Should this not be an option we are allowed to do because we are not, we just trying to understand what is the council's opinion and how can we do that? Then this is our option B. The two hundred and two room Valley Drive project that is currently approved as hundred and twenty dwellings multi-family, it's only approved for one dwelling. So we would like to do fifty low-income sectioned housing and the other seventy would be regular dwelling. And combine both properties, we have realized because of the inner parking, we can have up to ninety truck parking. So we can make a great truckers lounge. Between both properties, we have a restaurant bar because of the trailer park being right behind. The trucking community loves that in just one area, you have Walmart and all of those restaurants and shopping centers. And we wouldn't have to spend money on the shopping center, we would just make all the apartments. So Valley Drive project would stay as apartment as is and the St. Patrick's Drive property would turn into extended stay motel. See, this benefits city in a way that when truckers come in, they tell their friends and old truckers come in, it just brings more business. If a lot more people are staying there, it brings a lot of business to the surrounding retail centers and restaurant, you know. About ninety truck is one of the larger, you know, it's not a small size, one hotel can accommodate between two properties. We advise, right, we obviously have existing billboard, so, you know, it ends up being a nice project, we could fill up. So the billboard would say truckers lounge Perry, we would do around hundred and ninety-nine rooms. We can provide hotel rooms in the restaurant lounge and other open spaces, you would have free showers. If some truckers are members of our hotel, they say frequently, they would get a free shower benefit, free truck parking benefit, we put outdoor outlets, outdoor lights, outdoor wifi and stuff like that. But what would be the ask here? This is our current plan. We don't have high density approved, this is, this is approved as is. I have hundred and twenty dwellings approved on Valley Drive and my hotel is a hotel right now, hotel hotel. I would really need help with police and fire department because trucking community is one of America's most hard, most hardest working community, but the world-related lifestyle brings certain nuances. Sometimes it is drug abuse, sometimes it's prostitution, you know. We will obviously have security, we'll check their IDs, we'll have CBA, private, nice people and everything. It's not that every single trucking lounge and truck stop exit ends up being a bad exit, but some of them do. So I'm here upfront that if I end up going with option B, sticking to my current plan, then I would request assistance because, you know, my security people, I thought enough with the truckers park, if I log and go to Walmart and high-density retail centers and other places, it does not work out because we can't differentiate between our customers and just regular citizens. So that would be option number B. This would be our billboard, Perry Truckers Lounge and jail from the exit and our current, I'm sorry, one more? Here we go. Uh, this is the current picture, we just changed the layout. And our study shows because of the existing trailer park and so much retail being there, most of the truckers love, would love to park their trucks and just have a place to shower or rent routes and stuff like that. So I'm here seeking council's opinion which option I should go for, you know, any thoughts, gentlemen?
Mr. Wood, this is quite out of our process. Is this something that we normally would do, we did not go through the planning and zoning process?
So he's speaking about two point, two separate parcels. One of them, the one on St. Patrick's Drive has been through the process and came to council and you denied their request. So for them to come back with a, with a new proposal to use the motel for residential, that will require at least a special exception and that will have to wait, that cannot be reconsidered for six months from the date that you denied this, and I believe that was last time. On the Valley Drive property, that property did receive a special exception from council under a different developer. The applicant here or the gentleman here do have the opportunity to submit a new application at any time for that property and go through the process on that. But there is a six-month delay on the St. Patrick's Drive property because of the, because of state law requiring that you cannot reconsider or resell the application after, after denial.
But should the application not come through planning and zoning?
Yes, it would be submitted through, planning and zoning may go through the process, the normal process. I think the applicant is just, I don't know, asking for council's opinion of the different options that he's looking at.
With all due respect, Mayor, sir, the reason I was asked to seek council opinion because last time we spent about four hundred and eighty-six man-hours from bank people, feasibility accounting, electrical engineer, mechanical engineer, plumber, architect, myself, other owners, my project managers, four hundred and eighty-six man-hours. We spent about forty-eight thousand six hundred dollars doing everything. We went through planning and zoning commission hearing, we answered all of their questions, we had the citizens advertisement, we talked to the surrounding people, we did everything, we did another five cities of Georgia State where we did the zoning. And our final vote with city of council last week, or the week before that, I apologize, was denied. We did not provide you any reason and we understand, we did, we missed a step, we did not consider your guys' opinion, or maybe when we applied for me to do zoning, that advice was not correct. I don't know, I don't want to point fingers, I take the blame that I did not consider council opinion before. I, I don't know, I don't want to point fingers, I take the blame that I did not consider council opinion before. So I'm committed to this, my lender is changing all of their low specs, end-of-day hotels and trucks. Uh, we would still like to do apartments, but if I wait six months, I have all this science up and I, I can change my plans in the middle. I would possibly like to get the Valley Drive project special density exception request filled out this month and come in front of you again next month. I will have all this data and all information again, sir. But at that point, I would be too late if I'm rejected, I would have too many man hours and too much money. And even for that property, I would revert back to trucking. So I thought the advice given to me to come and see council's guidance was a good advice.
Well, it's correct, if I'm wrong, Mr. Wood, but it's not our process to give advice before they go through and you guys look at and give counsel.
I think that's correct. Um, I believe the gentleman had a meeting with the city manager who advised them to come to council. Um, yes, typically you are not given advice beforehand. Um, and I think, I, I don't know, I think they're looking for options of how to deal with these St. Patrick's Drive.
Good morning, Mr. Wood.
I did advise the applicants that they could come and talk to council because they were concerned. It was just stated about the fact that the PUD request was turned down. I also gave the applicants the reason, at least as I understood it, about why council turned it down. Because one, they were concerned about it coming in as a PUD, they could possibly be subdivided off. And the second was that, uh, council was not comfortable, at least my understanding. Council was not comfortable by having apartments located at that location, which is right by the Walmart. And whether it's going to be more commercial, retail, sales and development, the extension to St. Patrick's Drive. I, as Mr. Wood has indicated, whichever way the petitioners wish to go, they're going to have to, as I understand it, they're going to have to wait six months relative to the St. Patrick's Drive location. Whether council was for some of the concept, council may be against, or more likely not having any follow-up recommendations. If the planning commission, council probably doesn't have any opinion one way or the other right now because you have not seen the final, going back to the mayor's point. You all have not seen the final request coming in to you. You've been presented two possible, as I understand it, two possible options. On the Valley Drive site, as Mr. Wood has indicated, they're free to file tomorrow. You know, relative for the request about the increased density. But that will be a change relative to the special exception that council had granted to them. So we all have to go through the process of planning. And that's your station's position.
And, and just for clarification, the proposal for the truckers lounge is something that would be permitted not right um, in that zoning district and would not require action from council.
My recollection, when we granted a special exception before with the other owner who had come to us, was that we were looking for an opportunity to provide workforce housing. Uh, and at an affordable rate, we were not looking at, it was not an application for a truckers stay over and lounge. It was, that's, it was a totally different project that was presented to us at that time that we got in to grant the special exception.
Yes, and the, the gentleman here, they're mixing, or I think they're confusing two different properties. So the truckers lounge, as I understand, would, is a proposal for the St. Patrick's Drive property only.
Is that not valid ground, so what's bound to be on St. Patrick's?
So what would end up happening, option A, we, we would get the both properties, whether it's next month for one property and six months later for the other property. We would put both properties in nice full-scale renovation and on shopping center. We don't have to demolish the building or cut parts of it. Something nice, it would require more money, more time. But if I'm not granted, I'm locked in with the money and contract. My only option to make money is turn one property into motel and keep other property as low-section housing. But both of them would be marketed and advertised towards trucking community. Because they do free marketing. If one trucker knows it, they like the location, they'll tell the other trucker, they'll tell the other trucker, they talk to each other on radio all day long.
I understand that, it's just that I, I wanted you to understand that when we gave a special exception before, it was for an entirely different situation and set of circumstances and never corporate law. I'm still trying to figure out law, uh, where a loft comes in there. Anyway, that's a small issue, but, um, so to me, this is an entirely new, uh, thing. I mean, do we, about a truckers lounge on St. Patrick's Drive?
Yes, and that is something that could do without, without council approval.
I mean, I love truckers, they bring my house on boxes, so there's no question about that.
On the, when we were talking about the Valley Drive property, um, I don't know that the applicant um, brought up anything about corporate apartments, but Ashley Harden, the community development, her, she's an economic development person, um, said that there, she saw a lot of potential. Um, that, you know, some of the corporations already in the city, um, like ABS and, um, graphic packaging, they may want to have, um, rent a few of those for interns that come in or people that are coming from out of town, that need to be here for a week or so. Um, that are associated with the, with their business already, but they have a place where they can stay, it's not out of town. So while the applicant wasn't really talking about corporate apartments, um, I think that we were thinking that there is an opportunity for that. Whether it's a regular apartment building or one of these converted buildings as apartment. And I, as far as I'm concerned, that's really kind of the same thing. Um, you may just have a little more transient, uh, population, but, um, there's still apartments that you have folks living in for some bigger town.
And if we do not, if we do not go with the new plan, we stick to the current plan and current approval, if fifty of those units would be categorized as section A, low-income affordable housing. Mayor, to your original question, sir, this might not be the process the city has approached before. But my previous application went through planning and zoning commission, commission with all the answers, all the citizens saw the data, all the work. And I thought it was a good advice to seek out your, and understand the detail before I put more hours or more, you know, work into the proposal. Having your shopping center at the front facing Walmart and the three buildings in the back as rental, rental units, you cannot subdivide and hold them. They would never be, this is good for future business or corporate or low income, however you consider it. But we do make them really nicely. When we sub, when we submit our final proposal, everything I'm committing to, stainless appliances, nice shopping center with all the conceptual design, we will actually do. But having, having done five or six applications, when you do all the work and the day, the day of the final vote, you get a thirty second consideration. And maybe it was my mistake, when last time, Mr. Wood said that planning commission recommends approval, but the city administration recommends denial. I had that eighteen second window, if I wanted to cover my speak, and I was just flabbergasted. I had no idea why after so many smart people say this is a good place for city and for you, somebody denied it and I lost that eighteen second opportunity. And my vote was denied and now I don't have six months. So I'm just here seeking your opinion. Should I continue on my track for the truckers lounge? Or does council feel I should submit an application and there is a good chance that council sees it positively to give me approval for a little bit higher density? See, the previous applicant, like you said, man, he had a very good deal, he backed out of that deal with the current owner because when he realized I'm only doing 120 apartment and the cost hasn't risen significantly over the last twelve months of everything. We are still committing with more money, better project. We still, city has advertised that something nice is coming, we're going to fulfill that advertisement, we're going to do nice thing here. But I can go again, hundreds of man hours, hundreds of thousands of hours and then eighteen second consideration and then give a rejection. So I'm just humbly asking your guys' opinion, sir, and man.
Do you want to have some comment?
If I have one, consider, I would say, we come back real quick to what we would say, that, uh, the planning and zoning commission has to approve what you are looking for. And that's one of the things that has to be done and that's one of the processes that we have, we always had. It's not that you gotta bypass them and come straight up, I know you understand that. It's sort of bottom line, then I understand that you want to put the, how was on, uh, on one street, you know, I mean, old for better highway, you know, because you got, they already got finished down there, highway not there. And so we can understand that, but the proceeds, the event you said, option B, you can already do that, but back to the same pattern. That's a different, uh, situation here, you know, I mean, so that's something that, uh, you have to be considered. Uh, we have to make a decision, which way we're going to go. So I think, uh, I know it's kind of hard for you because I know you're ready to go to work, but I think you gotta have a little patience, you know, I mean. And as I said, in the process, I believe that the situation will work out for you if, if you've got the patience to wait. And we weigh your situation, we weigh your option, that if you bring it forward, and I believe it'll be a good take for the state of Perry.
I absolutely appreciate your opinion, sir, I, I will, I will wait out six months if I have to. And I will follow the process, the due process. I started investing my time and company's money from Thanksgiving, December. All the preparation and my reward after the due process was in March, but I will do that all over again, sir, I will prove it. I'm a patient man, we will do the work, we are not turning away, we are not going to give promise and turn away. But on the note, I just had a thought. If we can, and I'm not ensuring this is possible, if we can appeal the last decision and we vacate the admission of the last decision, can we withdraw? And then we would not have to wait six months for the state to refer.
I think you, the council has already taken action, so withdrawal after the fact is not an option.
It's not an option, right, I understand, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, council. You will take your, and take this under advisement, we appreciate the information.
Thank you so much, sir, I really appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. Page three eight three is a presentation on a revamped historical site tour. Miss Hamilton?
Good evening, your council.
How are you?
Good.
Name and address, please.
Uh, we're about to listen, 1282 Duncan Avenue, here. Um, we, we're here tonight to show you the new historical tour that we've been working on. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar with the old tour, it, um, you know, we have the signs in the, the yards and the, it's mostly historical homes, so it's mostly on Washington Street, Evergreen and Swift. But there was a brochure and it pulled it out into like a big map. And it had just great text, little blurs for every single stop and about, I think, plus to sixty stops on the tour. So that's the old tour. You get in the car and you drive and you say, oh, there's one, there's this house, you know, where Miss Evans lived here for fifty years. You drive to the next house and you read the blur and you look at the house. Well, we got, uh, we worked with the historical society, Ellie in particular, and our, the design team that we worked with, and this is what we came up with. Um, we have, it's a, it's a website, it's perryg8tours.com. And there's also a mobile version, so if you wanted to, uh, check it out with your phone, you can pull it out, it's perryg8tours.com. So let's just, let's just go through it. If you scroll down, you will see directions on how the tour works. You can, you can start right here or you can keep scrolling and it'll show you how it works. So, um, why don't we, let's just dive into it. Just scroll back up and start your tour. Okay, just start downtown. Okay, so then there's a map version. So if I'm standing in town with my phone, it will, I can see where I am in relation to any of these stops. So, you know, if I'm on Main Street, I could pull out my phone and I can see the map and I can click on any of those sites. It'll tell me how far away I am, you know, I'm a mile, I'm, you know, it'll, it'll have the address. I can go ahead and click on one, let's, let's see. So if you click on more details, it'll take you to that stop. Go back. It, it also tell you, but go ahead and scroll down and it lists all the stops. So what we have, it shows you what the stop looks like today. So why don't you click on, scroll down and see if you're more education or how the presentation shows up somewhere. There's more education. So when you click on a, on a site, it'll show you what it looked like back then. And you can scroll down, we've added as many pictures as we could find to the different stops. So you can see what the, the building looked like over the years. It's got a picture of the old clock that was part of the, the school. And then we even included the inside where they have the San Juan exhibit and the old classroom exhibit. We included those photos. So we really felt like this tour, it's much richer because you can, you can see more just looking at the building. You can actually see history, we put in as much history as we could, um, so, there you go. Why, why don't we go back to the tour map and let's look at it differently, let's look at what are the homes? We, we built out three tours, downtown historic homes and then we built the historic churches tour. Okay, why don't we look at, um, see if the first guy, this office is on there or Courtney Hodges' home? So this shows what the office looked like back when it was, I think that was, you knew this was office. And then you can see, before that, it, that's where the very first door state patrol was. And so we had that a picture of those officers standing in a port, so we were able to include that in the tour. So anytime, um, the Courtney Hodges' home, we were able to include a photo of him, we have a lot, we have an old photo of, this is really old, I think it was, it looks like early nineteen hundreds, of people out in the yard at that home. So we were really excited about this just because we were able to include so much more about a site than just looking at it from the street. And then on the churches tour, we really need help with this one. Um, we, most of the churches, we were able to find a lot of history on them. And I even called some and couldn't even get a good phone number. So we're still, we're, we're still working on the churches. But, um, like if you click down on either Perry Methodist or the Episcopal Church, uh, First Methodist or Episcopal. So we have the old photo there. And then I, we're trying to find pictures of the insides of the church, so I found one on Facebook of the Methodist Church. And then we have, any photos that we've had, we've included here. There are new, there are new family life centers on there. So, but there are some churches that are really old and we just don't have any history on. I need to get in touch with the pastors of those churches. But we're still working on that. So one thing that we love about this is that we can always add more photos, we can add more stops to the tour. We're even talking about making, making a bicentennial tour, where we include things that are part of Perry's history, like the old Dairy Queen, we have so many old photos of that Dairy Queen, not, not the current, but over the ages, the Dairy Queen that was out there reporting Hodges', even Skipper John, which we used to have that photo on there. Things like that, we might include in like a bicentennial tour, we're still, we're working with Ellie and talking about doing, coming up with that. But, I'm trying to look in my notes and see if I missed anything. I, I guess we just wanted to present this to you and ask your thoughts, if you have any questions?
Questions, Council comments?
Looks really good.
We will have to, I think one of the main things was we wanted it to be like stories of each place and not just this house was built in and this person lived there. To make it more interesting for people that might not necessarily be really into history. And this just literally launched like two weeks ago on the website. But one of the next aspects that we'll have is when you're on your mobile phone, that it'll be like a speed text as well. So when you're at the site, there'll be an audio compress that'll read you the text or the history that's about each site. So you're not like on your phone looking outside and having to read it, so.
Yeah, we're adding an audio component, and we're also adding for each stop, or each tour, a printable PDF. So someone can just print the tour stops out if they wanted to. One of the pretty versions.
May I give you some information?
Yes, ma'am.
New Hope Baptist on W. Breckenridge Drive, is the first black church. That's the old Hope. I saw where you had the new Hope, which is on this street, but I did not see the old one on Olivia Breckenridge Drive, and that is the first black church in Perry. And our pastor is usually there two or three days a week that can give you information about that church.
I think I left a message on their voicemail, and I think if you click on that, I think we might have the old church on that one. Is that the one that you're speaking of? But that's, that's all we have. So I really wanna get in touch with the pastors of all of these churches, to see if there are any other photos, and I'd like to get pictures of the sanctuaries in the churches and get a little more text, like a little more history and stories to put in there. Also, every, every stop isn't necessarily historical. One of the homes that we included, it's, it's not one of the oldest homes, but back in the day, they would do cars in their garage, because the owner owned a car lot. And the people in town would go peek in the garage doors to see what the new models looked like. So we thought that was a great story, so we included that in the tour. But we tried to put a lot of stories in, we tried to, and put as much history as we could get in there. And it's still work in progress, we're still, we're constantly updating this and working on it.
Questions, comments? Thank you for all the hard work, we appreciate that.
Well, Ellie did a lot of the research, she's not here, but she was a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There it is.
Thank you.
Item 3B is from the Department of Community Development, 3B1, Strategic Planning Areas, according to.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do we have some questions? All right, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be counsel. This item is a, part of a new project that we've been working on, the city administration, thinking about revamping our strategic planning areas. So we wanted to bring those to you this evening for your consideration. So first of all, I wanted to talk about what our strategic planning areas are and what we use them for. So as for, I guess the definition of them, they are areas within the city limits that characterize a certain neighborhood or something like that. And those are typically divided into neighborhoods or transportation corridors, or changes in land uses. So for example, our existing planning areas include things like Creekwood, which would be a neighborhood, or Exit 135, which is sort of associated with the interstate development. We use these planning areas for internal reporting, and we use them in most all departments, as I understand. I know community development uses them in permitting, you have code compliance, and the emergency services uses them for fire calls and police calls. And we can also use these as we're planning for future projects. So we look at them when we're thinking about applying for housing permits with CBBG, and for road improvements through the Omen cover. So we really use these in a lot of different ways, but wanted to talk with you tonight about maybe updating those. So as you can see here, this is the map of our current planning areas, and I gave you a hard copy of this as well. Do you wanna take a look? But after some consideration, we are, we're thinking about adjusting these masteries. And so there's a few reasons for this proposed adjustment of these. The first is due to Perry's significant growth, especially to the north and east and south. The new proposed areas we're coming to you with are associated with 2020 census block groups. And this would also reduce the number of planning areas. So there are currently 23 planning areas, and under the proposed new system, there would only be 20, so it would reduce it by three. We also believe that this is a more consistent and equitable approach to community planning. And also wanted to share some of the benefits of doing the planning areas this way. The first is that information related to each of these will help inform strategic planning going forward. And that's primarily through the data that will be available through them. So since they correspond to the 2020 census block groups, we will know the population in those areas, we'll know the demographic makeup, income information, housing characteristics, because that'll all be available through the Census and the American Community Survey. So we'll really know the makeup of the folks that live in these areas. So thinking about that, I also have a copy for you of these proposed areas. And we will look at them individually as well, but we do have an older map. So sort of starting on the western side, the first one will show us Heritage Oaks. This includes the airport, Heritage Oaks Park, and Houston Springs, that general area. Just south of that is the Preserve area, which includes the Preserve and Agricultural Village and the Holly Hills Neighborhoods. Next, we have Alpine, which is on the northern side, and primarily includes the Alpine Valley neighborhood. Next is St. Patrick's, which includes the proposed extension of St. Patrick's Drive as well as development around Walmart and areas like that. Next is Sandun, so that includes all the Sandun development, Kroger shopping area, Hampton Court, that general area, all the way up to downtown. And then next we have Old Perry, which includes downtown and the Old Bill neighborhood. Next is Creekwood, which is pretty similar to the previous Creekwood, includes the Creekwood Park and the neighborhood and surrounding it. Next is Fairgrounds, so obviously that includes the Fairgrounds, and also the Sand Hill neighborhood, and the industrial area off of Jernigan, which includes Anorak. Next is Tucker, so neighborhoods south of downtown and around the Tucker area. Next is Satterfield, so including from Satterfield Road down to the West Part of Trinket Facility, Brindell subdivision, and over to Abbey Clinton as well. Bridger, that includes Bridger Park, the hospital area, Morning Side Drive, and the neighborhoods around Morning Side Elementary. Pine Needle, that, which includes Pine Needle Park and the neighborhoods surrounding it, and also Legacy Park, and development on the southern side of Perry Parkway in that area. East Perry, this is primarily residential development off of Kingschatt Road and Hoover Road. It also includes our Davis Farm Fire Station. Next is Langston, that includes developments on the southern portion of Langston Road, as well as the northern side of Perry Parkway in that area. Lake Joy, that is development on the north side of Langston Road. It includes Lake Forest subdivision and Langston Road Elementary. Houston Lake, development near Houston Lake, and also the Water Eagle subdivision off of Santa Fe Road. State Route 127, this is, well, it has about one parcel in it, but it includes probably use on the north side or south, or State Route 127, and you know, any potential annexations down there. Next is the Talton area, that includes the development on the south side of State Route 127, the north side of Bear Ranch, so the Brand Reserve subdivision, and the new Lenters Ridge subdivision. Mossy Creek, this includes the Mossy Meadow subdivision and the Mossy Creek Middle School on Danny Carpenter. And last is the Woodlands, which includes Woodland subdivision, Santa Fe Place, and Wayne River. So looking at these areas, wanted to gather your comments and feedback on these proposed changes. Answer any questions that you may have related to the strategic planning areas.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, five, five point area, what was Benny in the area of, up there by Sandun, off Sandun?
Yes, ma'am, prop points is in the Sandun area.
Okay, and New Hope is in what area?
Uh, New Hope is also in Sandun. I'll click back to that one so we can see it a little better. This one is pretty good, it goes all the way up on the interstate, all the way into downtown.
And how would the new strategy plan affect that, that area, those neighborhoods?
Uh, can you repeat that?
How would the new plan affect those neighborhoods?
Uh, the new, the new plan, just calling it a strategic planning area, would really help us to know who lives in those areas, the demographic makeup, and you know, what was as we're applying for grants and things like that.
It would eliminate them from being considered block grants, as when we had census blocks, there was some diagram that excluded them from being able to be included in our, our block grants.
That's right. This, this would have no effect on applying for any grants or anything like that, this would only be used as an internal tool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question? Questions, comments?
I just have one comment, Robert got to have a park named after Healdon Time Needle, and now we get a whole section of planning. Is there something wrong about that?
No, I knew you were gonna say that, actually. I knew it.
We were absolutely taking feedback on, on the names.
I wish you'd just call it the Robert Jones section.
Yes.
If there's no other questions, I guess we're, tonight we're just looking for if there are some forward and planning for these adjusted areas.
That would be fun, I'd be took an opt-in motion for Robert.
I support the idea.
I think you guys have done an outstanding job as far as really consolidating our census blocks. I think it'll be far easier for all of us to work with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need a consensus? Do we have any comments to move forward? Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 3C is the Office of the City Manager, 3C1 is Department that, when 24% of the local workforce is working from home. Item 3C1A is the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Council. As you are aware, the manager has asked all of us to kind of take a look at what impacts to our departments there will be if 24, 25% of the population is working from home. As we've kind of seen this new phenomenon occur over the last couple of years. From the community development standpoint, I think primarily it's going to be a continuation of what we've seen over the last couple of years as far as new residential permits taking place. People can work from home and not have to go into the office as much. And so people that may have been working and living in Atlanta may see Perry as a great place to reside and be close enough to Atlanta if they can get there, if they need to, but for most of the time, they're gonna be here. So really, from the community development standpoint, I think we will see and have seen an increase in the number of permits for new homes with extra bedrooms or office space to do that, that work. We will see an increase in the number of permits for additions to existing homes or for accessory structures to accommodate this office spaces. And maybe see people wanting to make some modifications like adding pools or whatever to accommodate a new lifestyle of being at home more often. We think that there's a potential for an increase in code compliance cases, where people are staying at home during the day and noticing things about their neighborhood that they may not have noticed during the evening. And so that potentially increased code compliance. And so that potentially increased code compliance issues and possibly an increase in the number of home occupations and residential business permits for those folks that are starting their own business as opposed to working for, working from home for a business that's located somewhere else. So I think it's, we've already been seeing some of this and I think we'll continue to see this, but these are the major impacts that I think the community development department would have. I'd be happy to answer the questions if you may have all this one.
Great, you have a count. Mr. Wood, how do you see this evolving in terms of the type of housing requests that we're gonna, gonna see? What impact do you see of staying, staying at home on that, would you make?
Well, I think potentially larger homes, I think people are going to get on each other's nerves. You know, if they're at home a lot, so I think having a dedicated office space and, you know, that may grow into homeschooling where the kids are at home. And so you want to have some places where you want to separate from one another during different times of the day at least. So I think it's potentially larger homes than what we may have seen in the past, or potentially larger lots. But again, that is going to relate to affordability issue and what people can afford. But I think, you know, those are two areas where we may see that impact. Or if it's not a larger lot, a neighborhood that has pocket park or some, or is close to park area or office space where they can get out in and kind of make themselves or whatever from all of the activities that are occurring in the home.
Other question? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Three C one B is Fire Emergency Services Chief Parker himself.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Council. So as a current college student, one of the things I did when the manager sent this out was I went straight to Google to search, let's see what kind of research there was out there. So I'll show you a little bit about the research, talk about some current statistics and trends we have going on with the fire department now, and then what I feel like the impact's going to be going forward. So basically, as far as internet research, not a lot out there when you look at fire department's specific research, but there was one article that I found that reported that during the stay-at-home period early 2020, you know, when we first hit COVID and everybody said stay at home, our EMS responses went down nationwide. Auto accidents were down, those kind of things, head injuries, limb injuries, cardiovascular issues, those kind of things went down. Okay, so we actually did experience a decrease as well during that same period. From about February to July of 2020, our responses were down. I'll show you that on a slide here, you know, in just a second. However, when the initial stay-at-home orders were lifted and people began to get out, emergency responses increased and they have continued to increase since that time. So here, I don't know if it's hard to see, but if you may have it there in the board pack, if you can see the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one medical and motor vehicle accidents, that's the calls, and you can see kind of the ups and downs there on what we responded to during that time. So the highlighted area that I have circled in red, that is that February to July timeframe when things were down a little bit. But like I said, since that time has increased in twenty twenty and twenty-one, those numbers have remained up since then. All right, now some further research that I found on the internet says that twenty-six point seven percent of EMS employees are already working at home in twenty-one. So if that is the case for the Perry Service area, we may already be experiencing the effects and that current trend is likely to continue. Like I said, our call volume has gone up and if we do have the amount of people working home they say is already there, then we're already experiencing that based on the research that I found. Now, some more research indicates that households with members who tell or more frequently come from, you know, higher levels of income, they have higher levels of education and also better health. So with that, you know, we would expect or anticipate that the number of EMS responses should stay near the same or maybe go down just a little bit, but we haven't experienced that yet. Here's some basic statistics on where we are right now. You can see from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, it was an eighteen point five percent increase in responses. However, that did fall in twenty twenty and we think some of that could have been for that initial decrease during February to July. We dropped about six point five percent, but then from twenty twenty-one, we've gone up twenty-three percent of our responses, okay, so twenty-three percent more responses in twenty-one. Now to twenty-two, we have already, in just through February, we have increased another fifteen percent, okay? So again, I have the numbers there. So we anticipate if things continue, we'll, we'll reach a record of about three thousand emergency responses this year if we continue like we have been the last couple of months. Now, what does that mean? Well, those, if that trend continues, how's that gonna affect us? Well, basically, you can see we'll have an interruption in our non-emergency duties. So that means when the guy's going out trying to work on or check the fire hydrants or maybe they're out doing training, all those kind of things, they're gonna get interrupted by additional emergency responses. They'll have to take time away from that to run the calls and then get back to it. So the time's gonna be, you know, have to be a little more flexible. So whether it's flow testing, public education, all those kind of things are gonna result in delays or reschedules. Interruption opportunities for uninterrupted shift training. Obviously, if we run more calls, we're gonna have more wear and care on apparatus, things like tires, batteries, other maintenance. Obviously, fuel consumption is a, is a, could be a big concern for us if this trend continues and gas prices stay where they are. It also may delay emergency responses to other calls because the unit's already tied up. We get another call coming in, it's gonna be a delay until the next unit can get there. And then, of course, we, we could see that as increase for mutual aid requests, relying on our partners in the county to help us with responses if, if needed. Okay, so the workforce working from home impacts. Talking over with staff, we suggest that if more of the workforce operates from home, research indicates we would like to see more EMS calls for mental health. This is one of the studies that has shown that people staying home more, they have less social interaction and they suffer from depression, which may result in additional emergency responses to EMS calls. Increase possibly in home cooking fires due to multitasking. Somebody gets putting some french fries on the stove and next thing you know, they get a phone call from work and they have to go handle something. You know, now we've got distractions and we could have additional cooking fires. I put on here less traffic, but if you think about it, these people may have, there may be less traffic during normal few times, but if you stay home all day, you're eventually gonna feel like, I gotta get out somewhere. So the nights and weekends, we may have additional traffic that we haven't had in the past. And then, so finally, as far as summary, we feel again, the initial shutdown did result in a decrease in emergency responses. Emergency responses are currently fifteen percent ahead of twenty twenty-one, so we're gonna be busier. We'll have more wear and care on our vehicles and fuel consumption and increased mental health issues. Some research indicates twenty-five percent of the population is already working from home, so that could have more people at home lead to more fires or home accidents, less traffic during peak times, but maybe more on weekends. And then, so we anticipate emergency responses to reach approximately three thousand for this year. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
The solution to that would be what, a new ladder truck, is that correct?
One point five million.
Okay, well, that cleared it up.
Yeah. Obviously, you know, if you're running for responses, you know, additional personnel, if you're, you know, when trucks wear out, you need to replace them. You know, we do have a, I think, a pretty good replacement plan. You know, if we stay with that, we should be okay, but as our trucks get older, they break down more and those, those breakdowns cost money and, you know, but I know good trucks cost money as well, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not asking for the move or anything like that, but it's kind of reported.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, Mayor, appreciate the information. Three C one C is the Department of Public Works, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Some of this is already been touched on, so I'll just kind of go over it quickly. The jobs that are eligible for remote working typically are not your essential frontline workers. These are people who have achieved higher levels of education, hold higher-paying white-collar jobs and either have previously or currently been employed in city centers and live within a commutable distance of that job. So with this trans, you know, transition into a remote work environment, these eligible jobs, the people now can relocate to communities based on quality of life or amenities. Houston County, Perry, have a lot of things that draw people here, education system, lots of things. So I would anticipate that to contribute to residential development here. These types of positions can have flexible hours and so, you know, with that extra time and the higher levels of education, I would anticipate we would see a higher percentage of people who have the time to invest and participate in their community. Public Works relies on a lot of contractors for different functions. Listed, some of them here, tree contractors, obviously solid waste, residential trash pickup, HVAC, animal control, rescues, and so some of those contractors may end up transitioning their administrative, dispatch, sales jobs to remote work. And we have noticed this starts to impact waste management on whether their calls are sent to a call center. So if our residents aren't sure to call Public Works and they call the call center, they will ask you what city you live in. So that's an impact to our residents. So I can see that continuing to increase and have potential impacts to our operations. Internally, I would just expect to have increased interaction and exposure for all of our service delivery functions. People are home to observe trash collection, roots, patterns, stormwater. When they're typically away at work during the day, they can see how that impacts their property while they're home. Obviously, trash is gonna be a big one too, and I have a slide to go over that in particular, but online shopping, you're home during the day, you're producing more residential trash. People have more time to do DIY and home projects. And then just inherently customer service, they get more calls about these city services. So for trash collection, data shows that residential trash is world, not worldwide, but at least nationwide, has increased twenty-five percent since the COVID lockdown, so.
All of them was on lock?
Yes. And, that's right, e-commerce has really been boosted, consumers spending eight hundred and seventy billion dollars in twenty twenty-one. So our contractor waste management reported sixty-seven hundred tons of residential traction period in twenty twenty and sixty-eight hundred and some change in twenty twenty-one, which is more than a thousand tons compared to twenty nineteen and twenty-two hundred tons more than in twenty eighteen. So trash is gonna be, continue to be a big impact, working from home. And then the last thing I'll go over is just our utility infrastructure. As I mentioned before, you know, Houston County, Perry is gonna be a popular place for residential development and people working from home will utilize and consume more of our water and super infrastructure. There's some data here, since twenty nineteen, you can kind of see the million gallons per day and wastewater was definitely affected, or at least reflected that it was affected during twenty twenty, which was the height of lockdowns across the nation. In addition to that, utility locates, you know, as development increases, we'll see heightened need for utility locates. And then those people working from home will put a higher demand on fiber utility. And I think we've already seen a lot of that impact to collateral damages and locate requests in general from our utility department. So that will just continue to increase with residential development as well. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Questions? Thank you very much, appreciate the information. Item three C one D is Department of Labor and Purposes, Brandon Farm.
Mayor Council, I'll read it through this. I provided copies of the original impact assessment as well as this presentation, so. The original was more detailed and kind of boring, so I'll let you read that at your leisure. No point in doing this. All right, so the impact assessment. We, we analyze, we analyze budget trends and one of the first areas that we focused on was the environment of our surrounding areas. Of course, being in such close proximity to the Air Force Base, we saw that, we know that Robert's Air Force Base will be the tech hub for the Air Force. And with that designation as a tech hub, there'll be an increase in contractors and those associated services. So looking at the, the data, we found that there should be a potential increase in information, admin support, and tech services. Those are the stars indicated on the graph. So we currently, these are the areas in the middle of Georgia that we have that make up twenty-eight percent of the workforce current. So that translates into we have a higher potential for growth and I guess it, it, it explains why Houston County in this area has been growing population-wise. So just some other projections and trends that I've noticed during my research. In terms of leisure services, people are more interested in work-life balance. They are no longer worried about going to the office, traffic and all these other items. They would like to have a great balance day-to-day. I provided some, some stats and some data, found in articles, but there'll also be a hundred and five hours of free time, increase of a, of an average of a hundred and five hours of free time. So because you're working from home, studies show that people have a lot more free time and need to be entertained and need some leisure opportunities. The mental health aspect, of course, with, with the pandemic and now you couldn't have been a house worker from home, there has been, there was a study that showed that thirty-seven, man, I'm sorry, seventy-three of the workers reported that they were burnt out. So as a direct of leisure services, it would mean we need to find some, something for them to do. Childcare, that is a hurdle or an issue that many Americans are facing today. There's a lack of opportunity or places to take the kids. Many Americans are working from home while providing childcare to the kids. So we, we noticed that as a trend and something to mark on our strategic approach to this. Then I found something interesting was a boomerang boomers and sandwich generations. Studies show that there are more multi-generational families now. So grandparents actually moving back in with their kids and this is to help with the childcare issue in many cases. But and due to a loss of loved ones and other extenuating circumstances. But we see there's an increase in multi-generational families. And then leisure and recreation, there's an increase in wanting to travel. Volitionism is supposedly on the rise, I'm way under the shelf, knocking on doors, looking for them. An increased interest in productive activities. So when I looked into the industry and see what kind of articles and what kind of information was out there, I found out there were six themes, common themes. So there's an interest in balance recreation. Now, balance recreation is just basically. Now, balanced recreation is just basically, there's five components to balanced recreation. And they include like physical, social, emotional, physiological, mental and cognitive activities and spiritual activities. So that is considered balanced program. Now, these articles provide like best practices and information found within recreational leisure. Productive recreation, people want to have recognizable results in their recreational leisure time. They don't want to just, there's been an increase in people wanting to notice recognizable results, meaning fitness class, they want to tell that they're making progress. So our program needs to shift to appease this new interest or this need. Park equity is something that industry standards have said we need. We're looking to address the issue with equitable parks throughout communities. NRPA has a great article, several articles out, that the national trend or standard is setting is that it should be a park located at least 10 minutes, within a 10-minute walk of each area. Everybody in your community should be able to make it to a park within 10 minutes, 10-minute walk. And then outdoor recreation, of course, has been an uptick in the interest in the field of leisure. We're focusing more on outdoor recreation, self-guided activities and challenges that you can partake in. And then customer service, there's been a lot of focus on how do we get the workout? How do we make it more convenient to our end users? So what does that mean for leisure services? Taking all those common themes, we're reducing down to three, I guess, 10 of the values in our strategic approach. And like I said before, they're more detailed than the original impact assessment, but intentional programming, service delivery, and park access are three areas that we want to focus on. Intentional programming, because we do have these multi-generational families now, it's important to provide activities for those adults that are taking a lunch break and they want to participate in a Zoom class and have, or in using hybrid and virtual programs so they can log off, come to the local park, participate in some form of activity. So it's important to include morning and midday activities to our approach. Seniors, if we're going to have multi-generational families and households, those seniors and those boomerang boomers, as they call them, are going to need activities and something to do. So mid, morning and midday, seniors would be the ideal timeframe for that. And then youth, we need to, as the leisure services department, we need to increase morning and midday programming for our youth that are staying on with their mother or father, whomever is working from home. And as I mentioned before, outdoor recreation, give me self-guided. We talked about mobile pop-up recreation, pop-up parks, pop-up activities. Service delivery, I think we're doing a good job. We do need to enhance our capability as far as the ability to have virtual and hybrid programs streaming and having the option to come in person. Park access, just continue to promote our existing parks. I think that pocket parks is, I guess, the value of pocket parks has increased after this study. I think that the city as a whole, we're doing a good job at already identifying that as one of our goals, to increase the number of parks. And when it comes to top and 80-day compliance and opportunities, we just continue to increase those options in our parks. And I think that's something that I'll look if you have any questions.
Questions about leisure services? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Three C, one D is the Police Department. Where you have the captain for this tonight.
Yes, he got his feet changed, and I'll say what I can do for him. He's playing his big nine, so I'll be my best to do this. We talked about 24%. First question was, where from who am I going to pull this unit? That's an unusual number. We look at the work area that would increase from the law enforcement perspective, certain calls we knew would increase if we had the facts and facts and numbers they had to have. It's been mentioned several times tonight, mental health calls. The number of people that are staying in their homes, especially early on in the COVID lockdown, create a significant increase in mental health calls. And it continues to this day to the same level. Earlier, we mentioned banning disputes, banning time to get it. Sometimes it's not always good banning that. And so our numbers would increase on that. And we expect that there's a neighbor dispute. As also mentioned earlier tonight, sometimes the neighbors see each other more often when they see things going on in the neighborhood, things they did not pay attention to before because they are there, you know, sitting in the works of the day. They have issues with their neighbors, whether it's code complaint wise or sometimes it's a criminal issue. And then general calls for service. Again, when people are home, sometimes they realize things, sometimes it's a criminal, but they have a problem, they don't want to respond. We also expect, though, that certain parts will decrease, burglaries, that's residential areas, maybe even alarm calls will decrease as well, simply because people are home more often. I mean, people are actually home during this time of year. No one really knows in Houston County, there's not a true study that would locate. But we do know that 75% of the largest employer in Middle Georgia, administrative workers at Robbins Air Force Base, have been authorized to tell to work. Some have not recorded back to work since 2020. They're strictly working from home. Some have gone until one day a week or one, two days a month. So I would estimate, here, it's already over 25% based off of that final alone. The 59%, according to the Pew Research, said that 59% of people working from home do so most or all the time that they can work from home. Pre-COVID, that was 23%. So basically, we've more than doubled how many people are working from home. The high point is 71%. Most people believe that we will continue, would like to continue to work from home. As I said, September of 2021, 45% of the full-time employees across America were working from home. 91% planning to do so again. And as mentioned again, 67% of these are women, white collar workers, at least working from home part-time but not sitting from the parts of the day. There's studies from Stanford News, 40% of the workforce is working from home. This trend is going to continue past the pandemic. We don't see any reason it's not going to continue on. Employees are now requesting it more and more. Companies are finding it cheaper to have employees work from home and not necessarily have quicker, quicker more availability. Also, people that have found cheaper places to live, they might not feel attractive, so that their office is in Atlanta, they can work from home, they don't have to go in one, two days a month, that's going to continue to grow up later. Assuming that we have 24% of the people in the period, and we believe that's really going to be more than that, who continue to work from home. There's not a known number of how many can, but I would speculate you're going to find about 50% of the population is going to be able to work from home sometime or another of the workforce. We looked at the calls for service during the past, and 52% increased mental health calls in 2020. Another 14% increase in 2021. There's not a daily bias, period, which is for an unanecdotal cause of that mental health. It's at least three to that number. And some of those are long drawn out, some of those people that are depressed, they're seeking medical attention, they are dealing with depression, they are dealing with schizophrenia. It is an ever-increasing cost term for us. In 2020, our average disputes went up about 6%. Actually, it's a little less than what we thought it would be, but we actually backed down a little with 21 and 8% down. We do believe that people have been there for a high some compared to 2020, where you are again, so it's a different time. And we also saw an increase in 2020, 22% of neighbor disputes. All this together, somehow, we're going to be along well again. And some little things become big things, things that wouldn't normally have complained about or had an issue with the neighbor about, whether it's music or a dog or whatever test they be, that went up and has continued to increase in 2021, but not at the same pace, but at about 5%. We've seen an increase in calls for service in 2020. We're quoting statistics, it's gone by about 6 and 1/2%, but we kind of held it back out in 2021. But total calls for service in 2019 was, oh, 2019 to 2020 was 5 and 1/2%. And we see about a 5% increase in 2020. We still have the business days of the week, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it'll be at 9:30, 20:00, midnight. That has not changed since I started this business in 1987. Our crime rate in 2021 in City Period is lower for the fifth straight year. That's going to be unusual compared around the state and the nation. We have some increases in anger rate assault with one more than we had prior to the year. Nine for burglars, 13 more automobile theft. And we've also seen decreases in murder, rape, fraud, and death crimes. So there's some good things there, there's nothing bad about people being at home that are issues. We need the calls to decrease for mental health, family disputes, and neighbor disputes, and they continue to mix up. And the burglaries are, although 2021 were up, we do believe that based on the population increase, the number grows of burglaries, if probably less of people are at home. That's just my assumption. We believe that people are going to continue to have issues with being at home, but we also believe that, as we mentioned earlier, there's some pros to this being at home. Yes, it's going to create some type of issues at different times, it's going to create some issues between neighbors that we need to have. But we also believe there's going to be an improvement for us in some areas. And we hope to continue with our consideration of vital services to citizens. Anyone have any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
I was wondering, do we have a type of economic development, economic impact of psychosocial members or department, I mean, economic development department report on the impact of study at home?
We will provide that to you. What we initially wanted to show you was how more people are staying at home, working, what is the impact, first off, on the line agencies that directly serve the home? And that's what you get today.
Fascinating, but that was, those impacts are unanticipated.
I think, Mayor and Council, that the departments did an outstanding job on their presentations for their individual areas. I also think it's imperative for you all to keep this in mind when we're talking about our strategic plan and where we're going. Well, the primary things you may remember is some discussion about why we do the pocket parks. And I think you've got very good backup documentation today about what the importance is of having those pocket parks, what the impact is relative to both direct and indirect. I think a good example of that was this visitor's discussion about waste management, going to a simple call center. So if we have customers that don't call Public Works and they get, first question they're asked, "What city are you in?", that's going to be real, you know, put off for them. So there's these issues that we're going to have to be aware of and working on educating and advising our folks, but also adjusting our systems where we can. Following up on your point, we'll have more of the indirect presentations for you, like on economic development and some of the other areas. Other questions? Thank you. All right, number three C, two, is GDA approved draft from the Orange Football Main Street Lot. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is the first of a couple of items that will be coming to you this evening, following up on the regular scheduled Downtown Development Authority meeting that was held last Tuesday. What you have before you in your board pack for this particular item is a draft request for proposals. This is a request for proposals for the redevelopment of the public parking lot of Wall Street, Main Street. This has been reviewed and approved by the Downtown Development Authority. You all recall, I believe, back in October, November timeframe, there was a request from the Downtown Development Authority to you all to do something with that lot. It was the opinion of the Downtown Development Authority that that particular lot as a public service parking lot is not the best use of property. And given the limited footprint of the Downtown Development District, that doing something there would benefit density, would be favorable and preferable for the downtown area and try to put traffic and provide into the commercial mix, all that type of thing. There were some projects that have come and gone at that site. And currently, what the Downtown Development Authority would like to pursue, obviously, is this request for proposals. They would like to give the courage to put this out and receive proposals from qualified developers to work with them to locate something at that site that you all, as Mayor and Council, and that the Downtown Development Authority would deem favorable for the Downtown Development District. You can see in the request, in the introduction portion of things, generally what the Downtown Development Authority would like to see is some sort of mixed-use development of some sort of density, with within three stories. And incorporating uses ranging from residential to retail, restaurant, professional office space. I think ideally, the Downtown Development Authority would like to see some residential and listen around a little commercial power that might come to be. Moving along, the project criteria. Obviously, the Downtown Development Authority would not want to pursue anything at that site with a developer that is not qualified to perform this type of work and that does not have the requisite experience and where we're called to do something like this. So you can see that they've cracked some criteria that would provide some, provide a frame of reference to the Downtown Development Authority and you all, but also some detailed information about how the Downtown Development Authority could work with this developer to see something coming for which at that site. So the site plan, the renderings, cost estimates, all that type of thing. Then, of course, a review of the financials of the proposal, the offer, if you will, to work with the Downtown Development Authority, making sure that they had financial over否 to complete something like this. If we were to move forward with this, in receiving the proposals, you can see how they'd be evaluated out and weighted, specific types of criteria, project concept, administrative experience of similar projects, development team experience, that's the people that are actually going to be here working with the Downtown Development Authority to locate something there, project methodology, financial standing. And yes, that's not added to 100% as a typo, but we'll get to it in the current two prior to one hour. And then getting proposals, getting into the Downtown Development Authority, the Downtown Development Authority members reviewing the proposals and determining based on this criteria, and possibly interviews, making a decision about a developer they'd like to move forward with, that they just can provide their beneficial project on that site in our Downtown Development District. Continuing, it's really just, you know, Mr. Worthington and his team's fun and stuff. But basically, the requirements associated with submitting a qualified proposal to the Downtown Development Authority in specified timeframe. So that's the Downtown Development Authority would like to do. Staff and the board members are in concurrence that this would be a very beneficial thing for us to do. If nothing comes of it, nothing comes of it. We, however, think that given the location, given the momentum that we have in the Downtown Development District right now, that it would be a very enticing possibility for qualified developers to work with us on this. Moving forward, we would, again, like the concurrence. And as we have discussed in the past, the transition of the ownership in the past, uh, the transition of the ownership of the lot on which to do this, uh, would require your all, your approval, you know, so getting qualified for it and bringing it back to you all, you all saying yes, this is something that we would like to see in our downtown, and then allowing for the formal transition of the property to the Downtown Development Authority to begin working with the developer.
Questions, Council?
I have just a couple of things. Is uh the RFP philosophy, is is this, I guess, what we started from, is this, or has it been done in the past? Um, I'm just curious on that. Is this kind of a new phase that the DDA is going into, or is this been kind of how they've done this last time, year or whatever?
Uh, Dr. Albrecht, as far as I know, this would be the first type of uh development RFP the outer Downtown Development Authority has pursued, uh, though it is considered a best practice in downtown areas, I'd say it is a very common way that Downtown Development Authorities pursue projects when they see there's a need for some sort of project or a specific type of development in their district.
I think I just have one for our town.
Any other questions or comments?
I think my question kind of goes along with what, uh, Dr. Albrecht was asking. Um, when we, when the DDA sold the lot where the Commodore building is now, um, my opinion was just listed with a real term, um, put on the market, sold for more than it was asking for, and we attached stipulations as far as construction timing and that sort of thing. Um, so I just wondered why there was a transition and had to go about, why we wouldn't just put a for sale sign on that lot with stipulations for construction? Just just wanted to understand more.
I think it was the goal of the Downtown Development Authority to be able to work hand in hand with the developer to put something on that site that they see, they they would deem as beneficial for the Downtown Development District, uh, but also obviously be beneficial to the developer. Um, and in requesting proposals before they enter, I guess, given their choice, you know, as opposed to selling the lot, uh, coming in as a, I guess, a condition to sell to the stipulations associated with the type of development, like to see, seeing what's available to them and kind of upfront and then working with that developer to put together a project, uh, that they would be able to work with every step of the way. Does that make sense?
I guess.
Being more hands on.
My question then is, is the intention to sell a lot?
Not necessarily.
And how does that work if the lot is not sold? Do they lease that lot for, you know, X number of years? How's that work?
That's a possibility. Um, it certainly could be sold. Uh, I I I think in in leaving the options open and requesting the the type of information they're requesting would allow the professional developers to come in and tailor something that, again, would be beneficial to them, but also to the DDA. So if it's, we purchased a lot from, and we built this, we think you like it, it kind of coincides with some of your criteria, great. Uh, they go the route of the the long-term lease, uh, where, you know, the city or the Downtown Development Authority maintains ownership of the lot or maintains ownership of the building in the lot, you know, so there's a whole bunch of different ways it could possibly be structured. Uh, so leaving it up to the developer, putting together something that they would be, they would see as beneficial, uh, I think would be as beneficial to the Downtown Development Authority, if that makes sense.
Or you just, you also added in there the potential of owning the building?
There could be a possibility of that, yes, ma'am.
So that's included in this, that's part of this particular RFP that the city could own the land and own the building?
That's a, that's a possibility. It's it's open to that sort of proposal should they choose to submit something along those lines, yes.
I I think the other important factor with this too is to remind council members is the DDA does not want to progress with a certain particular project and then have it not go forward because council does not approve it. You know, when you talk about the uh property that you're referring to, Ms. Peterson, the DDA purchased that and already owned, so they had every right to do whatever they wanted to do, and in this particular case, they elected to put it up for sale. However, the parcel that we're talking about with this proposal is owned by the city. They already came with one proposal on how to develop that, and council is not comfortable with that proposal. So I think of an abundance of caution and to provide as many different options as possible that will satisfy council for the transfer of the title of the property. That's why they are pursuing the RFP proposal. So they'll go through, as Robert indicated, they'll have reviews based on whatever comes in, and then if they feel that a particular project is beneficial, they will come to you, and you will have to give an okay on that project relative to, are you agreeable for what's being proposed to transfer that title of the property to them? Because you may remember that was one of the conditions that you gave with this parcel of course, that council had to come up with what the use was that's going to go in there.
We may not get it. You know, that'll be the case, but, um, you know, if if this doesn't work or we receive proposals that the DDA does not deem as as beneficial of what they want to see downtown, uh, you know, they'll consider other options.
I think in reading this through, I didn't pick that, that it was the potential for the city to maintain ownership of the land and potentially ownership of the building, which honestly, as as this gentleman brought out with, he wanted to know what was going to happen before he went forward and spent more money. That, for me personally, that brings us back to the original October situation in that. I had, I had issues or concern about the city still owning the land and owning the building. Uh, so that, that part of it is still the same. This is life. Only thing that hasn't been talked about in here, and maybe it's in here like that was, and I didn't see it, is that we're talking about a bond program. Could a bond program potentially come out of this?
In this, in this RFP?
Uh-huh.
Uh, no, uh, right, as it stands right now, no. However, it rests on the agenda, uh, would create a framework through which that could be workable. Uh, right now, I think the DDA understands the limitations that they have in regards to down, you know, big time downtown development projects. Uh, so going out and leaving it to the professionals to put together something that would be mutually beneficial is what they're looking for here. You know, the the whole, the city retains ownership of the lot and building and all that type of stuff, and that's a possibility. You know, the same thing as a developer saying, oh, you know, nice spot downtown, Mary, we'll buy the land from you, you know, for whatever, and we'll build this and all that, and it's completely correct, you know, it's a backbone tax rolls, the the DDA provides something right downtown and all that type of thing. So it could really run the whole spectrum, uh, but that's what they wanted to see is what, where does the market, it's powerful for the market right now, you know, what what do developers want to do in our downtown? That answers your question.
I wonder too, in the percentage, um, breakdown criteria, what would be considered a valuable percentage? What if they added some, some for this and some for that and some for that? If it adds up to a total of fifty percent, is that enough to go forward? Does it need to be seventy-five or above? Does it need to be a hundred percent? What would the DDA consider viable?
Well, the, these are weighted percentages, um, so basically you would take each proposal and you would evaluate them based on the criteria that's put together from each of these different, uh, categories.
Uh-huh.
And then you'd go in and you'd say, well, this is, they did pretty good with the project concept, but their their experience is not there, so they'd be graded high on project concept, which is thirty percent of the overall evaluation rating, and then they'd be, you know, low on demonstrated experience to fifteen percent, and then you're evaluating all the things independently, each DDA would evaluate all the things independently, based on this criteria, uh, to come to a weighted evaluation score for each proposal, which then would be stacked up against the other proposals. Does that make sense?
Yes. I I I think my question was just if, just to say you have one proposal, um, what percentage that, I mean, what would be the percentage that you feel safe about?
There's no stated threshold on that. Um, you know, you'd look at it independently. Uh, if it's, if it's a project that comes in that's marginal, you know, there's no, you'd say, well, that's not the one, so you don't have to do anything with it. Um, if it's a project that you think would be beneficial and scores okay or whatever, then okay, this this could work. Um, you know, let's get back to Mayor and Council and see if this is something we could possibly move forward with, um, as far as the negotiations go or whatever it might be. There's no, you know, it has to be graded out to a certain level in order for it to be considered a viable project.
Well, where it's, just up above those percentages, number two says stated ability to, uh, illustrated ability to execute similar projects, so would that eliminate any startup people?
If it was a developer that has never done anything like this before, they would score very low on demonstrated experience of similar projects.
Would that be enough to keep them from being considered viable?
I I would know, you know, if everything else is great and the other proposals come in, they're not so great, but have some experience, it all depends on the the type of situation we see with proposals that we proceed. It would not preclude them if they don't have any sort of that experience, but it, I think they could be really difficult.
And I would add to that, I would guess the reason for that is that while you might score low in one category, you might score outstanding in all of the others, and that could be a potential tipping point for a more favorable decision in a certain case, or not a favorable decision in another case. Um, so if my understanding is correct, Robert, there's not really a absolute, you know, thing. But I think for me, I see that as a good thing because it gives us and the DDA more flexibility and more even specificity in terms of what they select and why they select it. That's the way I see it.
Other questions? Are you comfortable with this time giving consensus to the DDA to move forward with this proposal?
I'm sorry, I just want to ask one, one or two other questions. Uh, I know that anything that went there, um, is going to take away parking, and I know that, you know, the city or the us or whoever feel like we have adequate parking, we can do studies and we can show, and that we do, and we're even adding a new one down by the railroad to, you know, to park there, but I was telling you, I see, I see the railroad parking lot, and correct me if I'm wrong, I see the the railroad parking lot as overflow parking for things like food truck Friday and festivals, uh, New Year's Eve. I don't see it as a place to park if I'm going to run in concert designs. Nobody's going to park that far. So as far as access for shopping, which I think is different from parking for big major downtown city events, um, that is a valuable spot to lose. I don't know that our strategic plan addresses that need for closer end parking, for regular everyday shopping traffic, uh, shopping parking. Uh, we're doing good with overflow now with the new, but it's, I I know that was just a, throw it up to to put that in there, but I think we need to be convinced that at this point in the history of downtown theory, the highest and best use is not parking.
For you, if I may, you'll have a more updated answer on that when the parking study is done this fall. Remember, you authorized that, or actually, I mean, the study's going to be done sooner than the fall, it's going to be done in, uh, beginning of summer, I think.
But you're asking for it tonight. You're asking for the consensus tonight, that is not going. And even, even with the studies we've had, and even if we had a new study, we know, we know that the general population opinion is, and the one that we hear constantly is, we don't have a big red car, and that's people speaking out from their frustrating experiences, regardless of what our studies might show. So I, I'm a little on the fence as to whether or not that's not the highest best use for it right now. Certainly it's not income producing opportunity, but, um, it might be needed by the citizens of theory right now.
I would, I would suggest if that, if that is a concern, Council, then they need to say so, and will tell the Development Authority, don't proceed with that site. You know, we have, we have come in with other parking studies that indicates there are a number of parking spaces available. There's not the perfect parking space for every single person who wants to shop on Carroll, but in a reasonable walking distance for all the business locations downtown, there currently is satisfactory to more than satisfactory parking downtown. If the direction of council is they want to hold that parcel as parking and not transition it into some other higher, better use, that is certainly your policy decision, and then this process right here stops. I think the, what's very important, you know, coming from the DDA and coming from staff is for council to take a look at and make some determination about where do you want the downtown to go? If you feel it's important to keep the downtown like it is right now, or was five years ago, you know, depending on which constituent is talking to you all, obviously, then let us know, and that's, that's what we'll wind up doing. But the DDA feels and the staff feels, which I concur with, is that we have an opportunity to capitalize on this growth and the interest that we're having in downtown, and that most of the people coming to downtown are willing to walk a little further or park a little further away from that particular location to go through and experience what our downtown is. You know, our downtown is not a slow-paced, country-type place where I can come in any time of the day, park right in front of a store, go in, get whatever merchandise I'm going to get, and then go out and leave. You know, we're moving away from that, so, and and depending on who you talk to, there's already that issue because I can't find a parking space on Carroll Street at some particular time right in front of a meeting center, I think it's one of the businesses down there, okay? But I want to point out to council members, even though you hear that issue coming up sometimes, it has not translated into any drop-off in the lack of interest in our downtown or people willing to come in, park a little further away, and go to the shops or whatever the case may be. And so, and you may remember, we've talked about some realigning on the parking on Main Street, you know, we've talked about some other, uh, changes on parking on Carroll, uh, but we are not, we're not now, we haven't been in a number of years, and I don't think we'll ever be in a position to guarantee you'll have that parking space right in front of that store anytime that you are able to, you know, come in downtown. But I think so. But I think it's also important to, to take a look at what our downtown is transitioning to. You notice the, the recent construction and everything that we've had has been, on the former DDA property is multi-use, Airbnb and I think retail or possibly restaurant and downstairs. The former Rusty's location where Orleans on Carroll is going is transferred from various type of things, but office space and a restaurant to a much larger upscale type of restaurant with, I believe residential apartment living up above it. We, we ourselves are transitioning downtown from the underused old courthouse to our municipal court and York functions and all those type of things. These are all evolving, you know, type of uses and everything that, you know, focus on more of a interest and a flexibility and a curiosity, if you will, for people coming into downtown, like I say, to experience it rather than to just come in, buy a pair of shoes and go. And I think that that is the, the vision that DDA has relative to where they think it'd be a good idea to go, and that's why they are proposing this RFP. As Roberts indicated, the DDA may not find any of the proposals acceptable from their, from their standpoint. They may determine that, that some of the proposals are beneficial, but they are lacking, kind of going back on Mr. Jones' point. You know, like great idea, but not able to demonstrate that you're able to deliver, you know, the idea. Whatever comes in that DDA is interested in, then it comes back to you all. And at that particular time, going directly to your point, Ms. Peterson, you may say collectively as the Council, that's nice, but this proposal does not outweigh the need for parking. See, we always have that option there because you are the owners of the problem. But if we were to, you know, one of the considerations obviously would be if a proposal comes in and it's multi-use really seems to make sense and can add a lot more money onto our tax digest compared to a parking lot that's not full all that much of the time, from my perspective as a manager, that would be a good trade-off. And I think that's something that we should do and encourage. But all, whatever minds are coming on this, it's still going to be whatever you all collectively are comfortable with.
How many parking spaces are in that lot?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five of those together. All right. I have not seen many people parking on Main Street or up on Main Street behind Methodist Church, which in most cases is closer to that parking lot. And we got more than twenty-five parking spaces on Main. Parking's not being utilized as the comfort and the vast majority of people who work parking that parking lot are employees. My frustration with the city right now is that we have more employees of stores parking on Carroll Street, parking on Ball Street, utilizing or taking up those parking spaces that customers could use. And that's, that's where the big complaint comes from. I mean, when you have five or six employees working and they all want to park on Carroll Street, you can't do it. They're going to have to park away and walk in and leave the parking available. It's just consistent. I mean, I think that it's better for us to try to maximize the value of that and then keep moving people a little further out because no one parks on what I would characterize as, I guess it's the western side of Main Street or whatever direction that is. Some, I guess it's closer to south, south side of Main Street. It's kind of utilized. I must be going to a Snuggles Bank. But that's only a block away from, you know, you can actually park there and be closer than many places in town.
Well, I think, as I'm listening, to me, I would, I would own up a venue that time. I rather park further away and walk to the venue and let people come in shopping in my venue, park right there in front of the venue so that they can get what they need and move on. Because if I'm going to take a walk, I'll take it myself, then people come by, I would come and stop later, I would walk, I'd just keep driving. And so that's, they'd have lost some business right there, you know what I mean? And so like you said, staying outside of the block. Like you said, this is one of the things that has been considered and I'd like to see Perry continue to grow, you know what I mean? I think it will continue to grow because people are flooding into the city of Mary. And that, it's like you said, Mr. Gilmour, I think it's up to this council room, we're going to have to decide on which way we want to go, you know, make like that. But DDA is making decisions and like you said, they can't make a decision, they can make a decision, but then you got to bring it back to us and then we go. And you made a statement, I think the thing they need to think about if they're going to put something on the property, I would go, I don't want to put something on the property, they got to think, they got to think outside the block. Are they going to be able to afford, to have a goal, are they going to have to come to us like they did in the past? And we got to put forms out there that they're going to do what they need to do. And so I think at the end of the day, if you want, DDA will stand on their own feet to do what they do, you know what I mean? I think it'd be better, like you were saying earlier, the revenue coming, I think that would be better. That's one of the things that we have to look at. We want to be able to keep revenue, to keep things going in our community because that's what we want to do. So we want to grow to a point, we don't want to sit up here to die alone because a lack of industry, the longer we keep things, revenue going like it's going, people are going to come because they like what we're doing.
Well, Rob, and I'm going to say to Lee, I don't believe that the future of downtown is dependent on that corner lot. It's, I mean, I don't think, whatever we decide, whether we build a three-story condo unit or we leave it for parking, the future of downtown Perry is not dependent on that corner. But Robert, I, I am supportive of the DA, DDA cabinet project. I think I want to feel more secure about it in the sense that in October, we just, we just had to have a brewery. I mean, we just had a cabinet. Well, now, now we don't need that anymore. Now we need a multi-story, multi-use building, so.
We don't, we don't.
In three four months, what might we?
Well, the only thing in October was the brewery came to us and that was the opportunity that was presented, just to have a brewery in.
But we thought that was going to be the best and highest use then. Now it's a multi-story building. I just want to feel like we have our feet on the ground and we know, we know.
But you're going to have the opportunity to make that decision when you see the proposal. You, you might see the proposal and say, no, I don't think that's, you know, the best use, I mean, Council's going to have. But if we don't allow them to present anything to us, we'll never get anything. And that's, I think that's what they're asking is this is a mechanism to give you some choices as you move forward.
Well, it looks like everything they, they present, we tie their hands. Now, it's not that we were giving them the place and they wanted to quit, but I think they should have an opportunity to bring some things to the table that we might benefit from. I don't want the people that don't like walking. But I can run into the store that I want because one of the employees have their, their cars parked, their car parked in that spot. So I'm willing to walk a little bit further, you know, to get to what I want downtown. But it's something, it looks like every time they try to move one foot forward, we come up with ten reasons why they need to go back first. And I just think we need to, it's, it's just like City Council. If, if, if every time we try to put something forward, we are shut down, then that would give us the opinion that we are not doing what we need to do for our citizens. So I'm just concerned that. If I was there, I would feel like every time we try to put something that might be working, it's often stopping blocking the way. One day, somebody has to make a decision that we either need to go forward and we don't need DDA if we keep stopping. I read, I listened to what they said tonight, and I think there were some positive things that were said. It might be a couple of things that might be looked at, but I don't see any reason to not go forward with it. I mean, everything they try, we put, we stop. That was October, it's just like every two or three months, I might change the problem I have. But that does not make it wrong. It just makes a difference. So I think we need to look at that as well.
Mr. Gilmour, we, we need to put this on the agenda for both tomorrow night.
If that would have the Council more comfortable, that'd be fine. You also could have, since it's not something directly for you at this stage, you can just have a consensus, you know, that DDA can go ahead and proceed with their process because they're the legal entity that's doing that. And then they will, and then they'll come back, you know, to you all. It's whichever way you're most comfortable with. Or you can, or you can say, no, you know, not that site or not this RFP, you know, whatever it is that majority of Councils comfortable with.
What is the Council's pleasure? You know, you want to vote tomorrow or are you comfortable enough to let the DDA move forward and see what they bring back to us to give them the opportunity?
I'd like to say go forward, the deal with the consensus, then they bring it back to us. That's my opinion.
Does somebody agree with consensus?
I'm fine with the RFP, the RFP, the RFP.
All right. Robert, you've got consensus, majority, I mean, you've got majority Councils, unanimous Councils say you're consensus, move forward. All right. Three C three is the DDA-approved grant and incentive policy, Mr. Spencer.
This is kind of following up on the previous discussion. One of those things has been hanging out there for a little while now that the downtown Development Authority really needs some new ideas on. So we had a conversation, I believe it was in January, effective in time frame, following up on the project. Ms. Peterson mentioned it does brought to you all this past fall. And some uncertainties and concerns surrounding some of the parameters associated with that project, most notably the public financing portion of those. So the downtown Development Authority thought it would be prudent to go ahead and formalize a general policy that outlines the incentives that may or may not be available to projects downtown and get some criteria about when certain incentives might be available, thresholds associated with said incentives. And some of them, as you see in the document before this evening, really don't concern the downtown Development Authority a whole lot, but I think it was good to consolidate all the general items as something that could be provided to business prospects in the district. Going through it, you see incentives generally, again, offered a case-by-case basis, should you all choose to move forward. Nothing is ever guaranteed. I think that's a very important part of that. Generally, if the downtown Development Authority was looking to incentivize a project downtown, it would need to meet some or all of the criteria that are outlined there, right? So a project that creates or retains existing jobs, promotes private investment in district, leverages state, federal dollars, I mean, kind of see, you know, the, the general projects that the downtown Development Authority might look to incentivize at some level. Getting into the meat of the policies you have before you, the types of incentives that may be offered, again, on a case-by-case basis, the downtown Development Authority revolving loan fund that's been utilized in the past, SOD rank program, a very popular program that is utilized often downtown, the natural gas incentive program that you all established has been very successful, that reimburses costs of natural gas appliances up to fifty percent. That's a purchase that applies in installation, a very, a very good thing for restaurants downtown in the district. Downtown development historic preservation partnerships, these are the big state programs that typically see incorporated into downtown development projects, the DDR and LF, George Cities Foundation, and then of course state and federal historic preservation tax credits, which can be quite lucrative. And rural zone tax credits was the city, as hard as an excellent job on making pay, as you say, with that program. Unfortunately, it expires in a year. All right, then financing assistance, and this is what was the area of concern that was brought to you all with the brewery project, the brew pub project. And based on the input that the downtown Development Authority and staff received from you all in that discussion, subsequent discussions, we think we can put together a workable option to possibly provide assistance, you know, through revenue bond issuance or traditional bank lending, again, backed by the city. And this kind of goes back to the discussion we had about the DDA's not creditworthy and that type of thing, when it may be prudent to provide. And you can see getting into that, eligible projects must provide twenty percent of total project cost, the owner equity of this twenty percent must be real or personal property, so no operational expenses, that type of thing. And then it goes through, kind of like you saw in the previous document, a number of criteria that would have to be met or information had to be provided in the downtown Development Authority considering coming to you all to back financing assistance. Financial plan, existing businesses showing financial statements, source of capital, so do they have the money? They say they have history of ownership, legal structure of the business and experience of team, and then the type of financial assistance that must be sought. And then in regard to what type of project would downtown Development Authority be interested in incentivizing in that way or some of the other ways, some of the criteria here. And you all recall that initially when this was floated out and it was documented incentive policy, there were some things that were there in regard to job creation, and there was a lot of discussion after that. It kind of goes back to what we're talking about with some sort of presidential structure downtown. The downtown Development Authority would like to be able to, should present itself, incentivize downtown residential development. And that does not always come up with employee creation, you know, doesn't create jobs, doesn't sort of retain jobs, that type of thing. A lot of times contract to a management company, that type of thing. But still, that would be a very good thing for downtown, it's creating some of that liberal, you know, twenty-four hour, as they say, occupants downtown. Generally, you can see the type of incentives that we went over, the downtown Development Authority revolving loan fund. In order to be considered for that, they would need to provide a direct investment in the district of a hundred thousand dollars. As far as the natural gas incentive program, personal natural gas supplies, of course, state, federal downtown development programs, those are program-dependent, those criteria set by the state, they're eligible or not. And then financing assistance, you can see here, the seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Essentially what this is saying, if a project comes to downtown Development Authority that is going to invest seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars or greater into downtown development district, that they would consider some level, if, if they needed some level of financing assistance, again, through revenue bonds, through traditional bank financing, that type of thing. That number was, when you think about the type of projects that are significant enough downtown, and you look recently, right? You had the Orleans on Carroll, you have Oliver Berry's, you have Main Street Bar, you have the motor corp renovation that the Taylor Group is, is pursuing, and you have Commodore Building and the Muse Theater. You take the six recent projects, you average the investment of those projects altogether, it's seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So we think that's representative of the type of level of investment we'd like to see downtown and possibly incentivize. Does that make sense, that, that criteria we came up with?
The seven hundred seventy-five thousand, that could be not just their own money they put in, but it could include all their other loans and funding.
The project itself, investing seven hundred seventy-five thousand, they can see, they would need to, twenty percent of that, if they were to be incentivized, would need to be owner equity. And that's that skin of the game that a number of you has issues with about that project that brought to you this past fall. Hopefully, that's some of that concern.
Let's count it, the state level is, is it not Virginia, Virginia, Michigan?
State is actually ten percent.
I'm sure.
It's ten percent, state.
It's ten percent, the state.
Okay. So, you know, above the outline the state actually requires. And then getting into the process of actually requesting incentives, and, you know, community development, Ms. Harden, Ms. Hartley, and everyone's really good about being, making something available to prospects downtown. So if they're, if they're approached by someone about doing something downtown, hey, you know, sometimes we can incentivize these programs through our Downtown Development Authority, here's a process you can go and do, there's an application, all that type of thing. The Downtown Development Authority received the application, evaluated, determined based on essential criteria, the request, what they can or cannot do as far as incentives go. If it's beyond the financial wherewithal, the Downtown Development Authority coming to you all, should they wish to offer a project, some sort of incentive. But it gives the Downtown Development Authority something to work with, you know, some sort of sense of, they can go out and speak to this and, and let prospects know this is generally available to them, should they want to come downtown.
Question?
Would you explain the hundred thousand dollars DDA revolving loan, again, that, do they have, would anything be loaned under a hundred thousand dollars, or is that not what that means?
Uh, this is essentially saying, if the project were to come in, kind of like seven hundred and seventy-five, if they were to come in with a hundred thousand dollar investment, the Downtown Development Authority could consider that for some sort of revolving loan fund system.
They would have had that much too, okay.
Correct. Any additional questions?
Good question. Are you looking for a consensus to move forward with this, as a guiding standard for things they can do in the future, and then from that, go come to this body and like you said?
If, if it's, if it's part of the financing stuff, where you all have to back, yes, we would go back to you all.
Because the rest of us, we have very good rule of thumb about this. Only additional financing, we would never concern that, so. Counsel? All right, you're okay with it? I am, 3C4 is considered a, considered establishing a new advisory council, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council? I think if you were to look at the priorities that you all have as a body, communications and good communications with citizens, constituents, I think it would be number one. And what you have before you this evening, with these, of your consideration, would be something to work towards, that goal that, that we think you all have. It's something that seems to be growing in popularity across the state, either the Georgia Municipal Association, very big supporter of this type of program, and a number of cities, thirty-six cities now in the state of Georgia have a youth advisory of some sort. This is a resolution that would establish the city of Harry Youth Advisory Council for the city, and what this body would be, would essentially another advisory board for you all. It would provide the youth in the community with a voice, kind of a direct path to you all in regard to how you can make Harry a place of choice for them, not only now, but in the future, you know, hopefully, understanding what they want out of the community, so that when they leave for college, they go do something else, they choose to come back to Harry and invest in the community and, you know, again, make him a place of choice, and also helping you all, guiding you all in regard to some of the build-out, some of the strategic plan stuff, comprehensive plan stuff, just providing input from a group that has not been represented very well at this point in time. And also, providing back to them some sort of level of education, because if you look at all the classes and stuff, I know when I was coming up, there was no local government class in schools, which it had, it was touched on, but most of the focus was on the federal level, all that type of thing. So a lot of people don't understand what local government actually does. So again, providing a tie-in to that group, to educate them, and hopefully educate others, and kind of the domino effect about how local government impacts our lives, what a cool place it is, the city's awesome, it's a great place to work, you know, all that type of thing, just generally providing for a favorable concept of what the local government is and does for them. Kind of, kind of randomly, kind of, I know, but what the youth advisory council would look like, you know, seven member board, you have two members from each of the high schools that represent the city of Harry, populations that have been Perry High, Veterans High, and Westfield, and then you have an at-large member, and they would be required to apply. Staff would do the applications, get to you all for your approval, basically a slate of members each year. And you can see what the criteria for these members would be, very, you know, general, you know, you hope to kind of cast a Y down, this type of thing, and interest in learning about local government, be able to commit to serving at least one full term, and then have kind of the same type of attendance requirements as all of the other advisory boards, and then be in good academic standing, free of any serious disciplinary pressure to their respective school. So you put it out there, you pump it up, you know, get applications in, evaluating, and choose your folks that have some sort of indoctrination period, you know, some sort of retreat possibly, and then throughout the year, they would meet on a regular basis, staff would have for them topics that they could meet on, you know, the city's working on renewing their plan first, you know, initiative or something like that, here's what we're looking at doing, what do you all think about this, you know, and kind of going through things, we're working on our strategic plan, we're working on, we want to know what types of events you want to see, here's what we're doing with the money that we collect from your parents, you know, all that type of stuff. It could be very good in that sense to where it reminds them, something that, again, is probably not being offered to the youth in city of Perry.
Questions, comments?
What, uh, what grade level classes did you set? Tenth grade, or just open to nine through twelve?
It's generally open to nine through twelve, but I think we envisioned initially as being juniors and seniors. And we could stipulate that as, as part of the criteria, if it didn't become official.
I think, I think junior and senior stipulation is a good one, Robert, personally, my experience. But which my add, I really am excited about this, and I agree with Robert, that this is a, a forum to give the youth a direct say and a direct voice in their community, and I, something that we strategically plan for is obviously the future of our city that we all own, and they are the future. And so I think this is, I think this is great, and I appreciate all the work that we've been doing.
Other questions? Mary Hunter, you okay? With the vote, you?
Mayor, this is becoming mandatory for you all for a formal vote, since this is the resolution.
Okay. I'll look for it, we'll see you there tomorrow. I have four council members, Dr. Allbred, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Peterson.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Peterson, just to give them more, anything else for us, Mr. Peterson?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith, anything else?
No, sir.
Ms. Peterson, anything for us tonight? Ms. Warren, anything from the city clerk's office?
Thank you.
Our third department head, Ms. King, anything for us, Mr. Peterson?
No, sir.
Mr. Worthing?
Not tonight.
Mr. Wood?
No, sir.
Captain?
Well, just one thing, those that may not know, Michael Hampton, who's been employed with the city of Perry Police Department forty-three years and ten months, has announced his retirement in April fifteenth, it's his last day. Mike was policing when I was driving, he was in high school, it was all too fast, and so he's still taking a lot of experience with him, he'll be missed, and we're looking to fill that slot soon, but he, I don't think he filled it yet.
Super, thank you. Chief?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Swan?
What's that?
Ms. Pitts, anything? Ms. Clark, here off the flat, right there, right?
No, sir, nothing at all.
Ms. Parker?
No, sir.
Ms. Harden?
No, thanks, thank you.
Ms. Ford, any additional thing?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before us this evening before we adjourn? At this time, the only thing, a motion that we adjourn in the board session of April fourth of August. Motion, second amendment, favor, if you can, if you can, we adjourn at five o'clock tomorrow afternoon.